Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Steve, I know you ate two bowls of Wheaties this morning, maybe three, the way he's talking anyway. Good morning, everyone. We certainly welcome everyone here and thank you all so much for being here and again, Happy New Year to everyone. We're gonna go ahead and start with our meeting, but we certainly appreciate everyone being here. So with that said, I am calling the meeting to order. At this time, I'd like to call on the Steve Page to lead us in the invocation that we can stand or remain standing, and Councilman Gordy will lead us with the pledge.
With your permission, sir, just wanna make a general announcement about the Festival of the Arts on February the first, sponsored by our Phoenix City Schools at Central High School and in support with community stakeholders. We wanna promote the arts in our schools. Join us if you can on February first. Let us pray. While we pause this day, recognizing this is a different schedule, a different week, and we reflect on Monday, and the call to peace, a call to progress, a call to walking together toward an ever better community. Lord, we thank you for your servants who step out and help lead us, hand in hand, hearts and minds and voices, to a better place, to a better quality of community and relationship. And Lord, I just pray for each of us here today that we might be those reaching out, seeking to walk better and to lift others higher, and that this is, may be forever a place in which we are moving forward, and that we're looking to Christ and those who follow him as an example of how to lead and serve others. Lord, I thank you for this day in the business before us. Guide us in your peace with the best of judgment and for the better good of all concerned. And thank you for the public servants that offer theirselves to our citizens, and also, dear Lord, our volunteers, our council, and for all those who just come to service for the greater good. We lift them up and we pray for their walk and their peace and their fellowship as we journey through, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Resolutions. Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Councilman Gordy. With that proceeding on, we do not have any pre-summations or pro-summations, so we will, council, continue on. At this point, under the city clerk, at this time, council, I'd like to call for a motion for the approval of the January the sixth work session as well as January the seventh council meeting, and at the pleasure of you all, we would take this in one vote. May I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Mr. Day. May I have a second? Second, Mr. Gordy. Okay? Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lee. Now, at this time, council, I'd like to call for a motion for the approval of the call meeting minutes on the January the ninth state of the city. At this time, may I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
All right. Motion, Mr. Gordy, and second, Mrs. Johnson. Okay? Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, our council, at this time, I would like to ask, is there any unfinished business? Okay? There not being any, we will proceed with the resolutions and unadministration. We have a resolution number 2020 dash zero five to be ratified in reference to authorizing the mayor and the city manager to accept proposal from Sain and Associates to provide engineering and inspection services for the replacement of the bridge crossing Mill Creek along Oak Lica Road. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the city of Phoenix City has received federal funds through the Columbus Phoenix City Metropolitan Planning Organization, MPO, as well as the Alabama Transportation Rehabilitation and Improvement Program, ATRIP, for the replacement of the bridge crossing Mill Creek along Oak Lica Road, project number ACAABRZ59582-ATRP11. And whereas engineering and inspection services will be required during the construction of said project, and whereas Sain and Associates has provided a proposal in the amount of $392,531 for this scope of services, the Alabama Department of Transportation, ALDOT, concurs with the scope and fees associated with this proposal. And whereas the city of Phoenix City will receive 80 percent, $314,024.80 federal funding, and pledges 20 percent, $78,506.20. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby authorize the mayor and city manager to sign and accept this proposal from Sain and Associates to provide engineering and inspection services for the above said project. Passed, approved, and adopted this 10th day of January 2020, ratified this 22nd day of January 2020.
Okay. Thank you so much, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir.
Council, we have all heard the reading of the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to ratify or approve.
Motion to ratify.
All right. Motion, Mrs. Johnson. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Bailey. Any question, comments, discussion? Okay? If not, call for a vote. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
And also proceeding on, unadministration, we have resolution in reference to renewing the tax structure of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, for the tax year begin in October the first, 2020. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, has reviewed the tax structure of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, and it deems it advisable and or necessary to adopt a resolution in connection herewith. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, that a tax fee in the same as hereby levied on the property situated in Phoenix City, Alabama, for the next succeeding tax year at the rate not in excess of the constitutional limits which may be levied on such property, as the same is assessed for taxation on the books of assessment for the state and county tax year ending the 30th day of September, next succeeding the levy. The taxes to be levied for the succeeding tax year commencing on the first of October 2020 shall be seven mils for bond payments, five mils for general operating expenses, three mils for school tax, and an additional four mils for school tax. Be it further resolved that the home state exemption as approved in ordinance number 9614, adopted on the 18th day of July 1996, does hereby apply to the taxes as levied above. Passed, approved, and adopted this 22nd day of January 2020.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Council, we have heard the reading of the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Day. May I have a second? Second, Mr. Gordy. Mr. Smith, if you can, please explain, this is not, just go ahead and explain exactly what this is.
Just wanna make it plain that we are not raising taxes. I know that rumor will get out there somewhere. Taxes, property taxes, ad valorem taxes are set every year, and you have to do this by resolution. This is under state regulations, state laws, that we have to do this. All we're doing is reaffirming exactly the same tax rate that's been in place for more than 20 years. It's the same 59 and a half mils that it has been for, like I said, more than two decades. There's no change being proposed. I'd also point out that of that 59 and a half mils, 35 and a half mils of that is, the vast majority of the income in property, personal property tax is paid, here goes to our school system. The county gets 12 mils and we get 12 mils, but the rest of it goes to the school system.
Okay. Also, state, that we're following what the state said, this is not anything that the council?
This is state regulations, state guidelines. You can only set tax rates once, you know, that last for one year, and then you have to renew them every year. And I'll just remind also that this is the tax rate, not for 2019 or in 2020, but it takes effect next October for the 2020, 2021 year. And we set the tax rate that existing today was set last January, and it's the same 59 and a half mils that it's been, like I said, for more than two decades.
But also explain how it has to be a referendum. This has changed, this.
Yeah, the change of taxes.
We can't do this.
If you wanted, and we have no proposal, no intent to raise property tax, but if you wanted to do something, you have to have a referendum. The people of the city would have to vote on any change, any increase in ad valorem tax rate. The city council has no authority to do that on their own.
Well, they'd have to vote for a decrease too, wouldn't they?
Yeah.
Either way, if it's any change, the people vote.
Change the tax rate has to be voted on by vote of the people. We can set the tax rate every year as long as it doesn't change, but if it changes, the people have to vote on that in a referendum.
Or a voting.
Yeah.
That's right. Thank you, Steve. We just wanted to get some clarity on that, 'cause some of us have had calls. Some of the council members has had calls from the news reporters and all of that, so thank you, Mr. Smith. Any other comments? If not, like to call for the vote. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Continue to proceed on. We have a resolution in reference to authorizing and directing the mayor and the city manager to take all actions necessary to acquire the following properties from the state of Alabama in an amount not to exceed $100 per property. Number one is 1 Old State Road parcel number 57-08-02-04-1-004-002 dot zero zero number zero. Number two, 7 Old State Road parcel number 57-08-02-04-1-004-003 dot zero 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 number symbol zero. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the city of Phoenix City placed special assessments on 1 Old State Road per resolution number 2014 dash 406 and 7 Old State Road per resolution number 2014 dash 407 to collect costs expended for the demolition of unsafe structures on said properties. And whereas the properties are now in possession of the state of Alabama as a result of the property taxes not being paid, and whereas it is the desire of the city to purchase said properties from the state of Alabama for the amount of $100 per property so that the city may sell said property and recover its cost. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the mayor and city manager hereby authorized and directed to take all actions necessary, acting on behalf of the city of Phoenix City, to acquire the following properties from the state of Alabama for an amount not to exceed $100 per property. Ad valorem taxes due to the state, county, and city maturing before and on October the first, 2020, are deemed to be included in the price. 1 Old State Road parcel number 57-08-02-04-1-004-002-0000. CS number 57140098 with a legal description following. Number 7 Old State Road parcel number 57-08-02-04-1-004-003 point 0000. CS number 57160029 with a legal description following. Passed, approved, and adopted this 22nd day of January 2020.
Thank you, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir.
Council, we all heard the reading of the master resolution, and you've heard the reading of both parcels, so with that, at the pleasure of the council, we'd like to take these in one vote. So with that being said and stated, I'd like to call for a motion for the approval of this resolution.
Motion to approve.
All right. Motion by Mr. Day. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Bailey. Any comments or discussion? Okay? There not being any, at this time, I'd like to call for the vote. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, unadministration, is a resolution in reference to authorizing and directing the mayor and city manager to sign change order number one with constant engineering in the amount of $31,810 for reduction and additions of Somerville Road sanitary sewer project. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas in previously adopted resolution number 2019 dash 150, Gordy Construction Company was contracted to perform the work required for the installation of sewer force main on Somerville Road in an amount of $648,835. And whereas it has been determined that a change order is necessary, more specifically as follows. Change order number one, the reduction for jack and bore, reduction of $56,375. An addition, open, cut, and pave, addition of $28,185. Addition of pipe casing, addition of $60,000. The total of the addition and deduction is an addition of $31,810. Whereas such a change order would result in a contract adjustment of an additional $31,810, thus increasing the project cost to $680,645. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby direct and authorize the mayor and city manager to sign change order number one of the Somerville Road sanitary sewer project. Passed, approved, and adopted this 22nd day of January 2020.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Council, we've heard the reading of the resolution. At this time, council, I would like to ask for a motion for approval.
Motion to approve.
All right. Motion, Mrs. Johnson. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Bailey. Comments or discussion?
Yes, Mr. Assistant City Manager. Is there a timeframe on that?
The project is underway now. We're a little half complete. What this is, is the extension of sewer up Somerville Road for two reasons. One, we're gonna protect the encroachment of that area from old utility districts and open that area for future development. There's a lot of really nice land up there that can be developed, and once you get the sewer line in, we think that will happen. We've already been approached by a developer to put in some housing up in that area. And, but along Somerville Road, it's really congested with underground utilities. There's a major gas line, major power lines, phone lines, fiber optic lines, and where this is, is where it crosses the entrances to the subdivisions that are along there, and because of the danger of the underground gas line, it's really not safe to try to bore under those streets because those gas lines will sometimes vary a little bit in terms of exactly where they are. And so what we're gonna have to do is cut those roads and then put a steel casing in and run the pipe through the steel casing, put it up. Should be done within the next two or three weeks, weather depending. At this time of year, obviously, the weather has a great deal to do with when you can do, you know, construction out there. But we're a little over halfway through with the project.
So we had a, I mean, had a schedule.
It's coming along very well. As of last week, they have put in 4,500 feet of, 9,000 feet of line, and have continued to work. So we're a little over halfway through. Each one of these subdivision entrances will take about a day to do, and they will, of course, you know, keep a lane open and direct traffic, and people will be able to get in and out. Will be a little bit inconvenient that one day for those people. Might slow down, you know, getting in and out a little bit, but we're coordinated and with as least disruption as we can, but you still have to cut the street. And then the temperature's gotta get warming up. We'll put gravel in there, but the temperature's gonna get warming up before we can tape it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Steve. Any other comments, discuss?
There's additional change order coming on, so.
Oh, yeah. I'm gonna point that out.
The money that we're gonna get back off of that.
This, this project, this portion of this project came in way under budget, and it comes into the Saddle Brook Lift Station. Well, if we can acquire the easements south of that, we would like to take that Saddle Brook Lift Station out of service, and which would save us in the maintenance and electricity and all of that, and we can then gravity feed from there south. It goes across the school property, across Explorer Drive, and a private property to a place where we can gravity feed. We can do that all within the original budget. The state, we're funding this with the state revolving fund. They've already approved that extension, and so if we can get all the easements, and we have preliminary agreement on that, but it hadn't been done.
We know, though.
Until it's done, it's not done. But if we can acquire the two easements that we need, what we would like to do is take that Saddle Brook Lift Station out of service and then gravity feed that sewer south to the manhole south of Explorer Drive right there. And long term, that'll save the city a considerable amount of money, and it's, like I said, the state revolving fund, they've already approved it, and we will, we will get some principal reduction or some grants as part of this project that will reduce the cost, and it just makes sense to do this while we're out there doing it, and it's well within the, still, even with the additional work, it's still less than the original budget that we had for this project.
Question for you. If you get those easements and you do away with that lift station, will that put extra pressure on that stuff down at Bridgewater?
No, this, no.
I mean, I know all that eventually goes that direction, but that would be on a different side of that pipe that we're having trouble with.
This particular is routed back, and it comes down Somerville Road to McIntosh and that area there. This one doesn't actually go through over at Bridgewater.
And also at Bridgewater, we got to have that project that we.
Right. But I just wanna make sure we wasn't fixing to add to something before we corrected, so it might be shooting ourselves in the foot.
Yeah. We're analyzing the easements on the Bridgewater. As soon as we can get those easements in place, we will start the engineering. We're gonna get the easements in place, go and do the survey work, start the engineering, but we plan to do that project this summer. And we've already, again, submitted that to the state revolving fund along with the upgrades to the wastewater treatment plant that we will be doing.
Sound like a little more than we answered.
It does. Yeah.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Any others? If not, at this time, I'd like to call for the vote. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
And also on the administrations, we have a resolution in reference to authorizing the mayor and the city manager to accept a quote from Huckabee Brothers Flooring Covering Incorporated to replace the floor covering in a municipal building complex. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the city of Phoenix City is proposing to replace the floor covering in the Phoenix City Municipal Complex. Whereas the city of Phoenix City has solicited bids as required by the Alabama bid law. Whereas the city of Phoenix City received no bids. Whereas the city of Phoenix City solicited quotes for said project. Whereas the city of Phoenix City received quotes, and the lowest quote was from Huckabee Brothers Floor Covering Incorporated, this price being $78,730, to move furnishings, demolition of old products, prep flooring, and furnish and install new flooring products as requested. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, authorizes the mayor and city manager to accept this quote and enter into a contract with Huckabee Brothers Floor Covering Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $78,730, $730 to replace the floor covering in the Phoenix City Municipal Complex. Passed, approved, and adopted this 22nd day of January 2020.
Thank you.
Yes.
Council, each of us have heard the reading of this resolution. At this time, may I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion, Mr. Gordy.
Second.
Second, Mr. Day?
Yes.
Okay. You got that, ma'am?
Yes, sir.
Any comments or discussion?
I have a question, ma'am. I look at, I'm sure guarantee warrants and all that come with this job.
Yeah, they'll have standard warranties for flooring and carpet.
They don't give the years or something.
I haven't looked at the proposal. I don't have that on hand, and I'll get that for you.
I was just wondering, I didn't say it for you. Thank you, sir.
All right. Any other comments?
Mr. Smith, how soon would this project be underway to replace the floor?
As soon as they get the product ordered, you probably, they have to order it, you know, once we, once we, we'll issue a purchase order today or tomorrow, so they'll have to order the product, so a few weeks.
Okay. They doing the whole building over here?
Yeah.
Plus back in the utility department, does like the workshop?
The one-story area of the utilities and code enforcement is, plus the three-story building down the corner, that entire building, part of the flooring is being redone.
Won't everybody realize we're doing more than what you might think's being done. There's a good bit more of that.
That carpeting and flooring is more than 20 years old. It was done in 1996.
It's had its day.
It's served its time.
It's had it. We got all the money worth of it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Okay? No other comments or discussion? At this time, I'd like to call for the vote. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Proceeding on on the building department, we have resolutions in reference to declaring properties a public nuisance and authorizing and directing the housing abatement board to take necessary action to demolish, remove, and clear all building materials, trash and debris from the following properties. One, 1305 Seventh Avenue. Number two, 2013 Ninth Avenue. The third one is 308 Sixteenth Avenue. Four, South, I'm sorry, thank you, Mr. Bailey. 308 Sixteenth Avenue, South. Number four, 401 Fifteenth Avenue, South. Number five, 2407 Sixteenth Court. Number six, 2709 Sixteenth Court. And number seven, 707 Eighth Street. With that, council, we would ask the clerk to read one master resolution, and at the pleasure of the council, we would take this in one vote. Okay? Everyone concurs. With that, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the city of Phoenix City has declared seven properties located within Phoenix City, Alabama, to be a public nuisance in accordance with Alabama State Law, Section 1153A, one. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the housing abatement board is hereby authorized and directed to take the necessary action to demolish, remove, and clear all building materials, trash, and debris from each property, and to have the lots cleared at the following locations in Phoenix City, Alabama. 1305 Seventh Avenue, 2113 Ninth Avenue, 308 Sixteenth Avenue, South, 401 Fifteenth Avenue, South, 2407 Sixteenth Court, 2409 Sixteenth Court, 707 Eighth Street. Be it further resolved that the cost of demolition by the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, shall be assessed against the property taxes. Passed, approved, and adopted this 22nd day of January 2020.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir.
Council, we've heard the reading of the master resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
All right. Motion, Mr. Gordy. May I have a second?
Sure.
Second, Mr. Bailey. Any comments or discussion?
Let me just say, Mayor, anytime I see any properties in this condition, and when it gets to this point, ready for demolition, that means that we, we pay a department in the city to go out and look at these properties, or properties just, you know, in Phoenix City, and they become a danger to society, to the citizen in our community. And it really, like I said, it really alarms me when it gets to this point, that we have to take precautionary measures to make sure that the structures don't fall and they become and they become, um, a nuisance. And I, I would just say to our citizens, if you know you have property, you have relatives that have property in the city, um, make sure, just make sure that, uh, they are contacted before it gets to this point, uh, where it becomes a, a hazard and, um, it becomes dangerous to citizens and, and, and those, uh, that are, can be affected. Um, keep up your property. You know, we have the care of premises, uh, ordinance in place, and it's so important. If you can, uh, you must, uh, keep up your property. Uh, so again, um, I, I just hate that it gets to this point, uh, where it has to be, something has to be done, but it is the responsibility of the individuals in the Building Department to make sure that we don't have properties like this. Um, so keep up your property. It is so important. If you know relatives that have moved away and have, um, will any properties to your family members, make sure that those properties are being taken care of. It's so, so important, uh, in our community.
Thank you, Mrs. Johnson. But let, let me say this. Once it gets to this process, uh, the department, we, we follow the law of the land, uh, from the state. There's a process that goes through several certified mails are mailed out. So once it get to this point, no one should be surprised because this department does a great job as far as letting people know and giving them ample enough time to rectify the problem. So what it does, and once it gets to this point, it's almost impossible to be stopped because of all the regiment that has taken place under the laws. So it should be no surprise, and I concur with Mrs. Johnson, that, you know, we're trying to make sure that we have a beautiful city and these things happen, but it does not just happen and there's no surprises when any property owners, when it gets to this point. Okay?
Well, the property don't run down overnight, and we don't get to the point of, of having to do this overnight. This takes about a year and a half or so to get to this point. And at any time, they can come to us and tell us that they want to refurbish the property. They can ask for an extension on it. We granted extensions before. We're not trying to, you know, go this route, but this is the last existing route we have. And you owe this to the other people that live in those neighborhoods to make sure that their neighborhoods are taken care because they're properly taking care of their properties. So they deserve to see their neighborhoods stay in good condition, and we want it to stay safe and not have vagrants and people of that nature coming in and out because it's a danger for the, for the people that are around those houses, and it's a danger for the people that might inhabit them that shouldn't be in there, and it's just, it's, it's a blight on the whole city. So, uh, we hate that it gets to this point. It's not something we enjoy doing, but as the mayor said, it does get to a point to where it, it has run its course, and this is the last opportunity. But with that said, if I'm not in, incorrect, they can still redeem the property. We're not trying to take the property from anybody. We're just getting rid of an eyesore or a danger that's on the property. So once we, that's done, they can redeem the property. So it's, uh, it's not like the city is trying to confiscate or take over something. So I want everybody to understand that also.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Any other comments, discussion? Not at this time, let the call for the vote. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And proceeding on on the Engineering and Public Works Department, we have a resolution in reference to accepting a quote and authorizing the purchase of a twenty-by-fifty-by-fourteen-feet awning in an amount not to exceed five thousand four hundred dollars for Vehicle Maintenance Division. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the Vehicle Maintenance Division of the Engineering and Public Works Department of the City of Phoenix City desires to purchase a twenty-foot-by-fifty-foot-by-fourteen-foot awning. And whereas Southern Awning has provided a quote for a twenty-foot-by-fifty-foot-by-fourteen-foot awning in an amount not to exceed five thousand four hundred dollars. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby accept the quote from Southern Awning in an amount not to exceed five thousand four hundred dollars for the purchase of a twenty-foot-by-fifty-foot-by-fourteen-foot awning and does authorize said purchase. Passed through and adopted this twenty-second day of January, twenty twenty.
Thank you, Mrs. Lee.
Yes.
Counsel, we all have heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion for approval.
Motion to approve.
All right. Motion, Mrs. Johnson, and second, Mr. Day. Okay?
Got it.
Any comments, discussion? Okay. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Proceeding on on the Parks and Recreation Department, we have a resolution in reference to declaring various items surplus to be sold as scrap or destroyed at the city landfill. Mrs. Lee?
Whereas the City of Phoenix City, Alabama Parks and Recreation Department has various items of personal property which are no longer needed for public or municipal purposes. And whereas Section eleven forty-three fifty-six of the Code of Alabama nineteen seventy-five authorizes the municipal governing body to dispose of personal property no longer needed for the City of Phoenix City. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the described property as listed on the attached sheets labeled Exhibit A, Exhibit B, and Exhibit C are hereby declared surplus to be sold as scrap or destroyed at the city landfill if no one purchased it or uses it. Passed through and adopted this twenty-second day of January, twenty twenty.
All right. Thank you. Counsel, we've heard the reading of the resolution. May I have a motion for approval, please?
Motion to approve.
All right. Motion, Mr. Gordy, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Bailey. Comments or discussion? Okay. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Proceeding on on the Utilities Department, we have a resolution in reference to declaring one nineteen ninety-four Ford Backhoe as surplus to be sold at auction or as scrap. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the Utilities Department of the City of Phoenix City has a nineteen ninety-four Ford Backhoe that is no longer needed for public or municipal purposes. And whereas Section eleven fifty-four-three fifty-six of the Alabama Code of nineteen seventy-five as amended authorizes the municipal governing body to dispose of unneeded property. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the following described property is hereby declared surplus to be sold at auction or as scrap. One nineteen ninety-four Ford Backhoe, model number sixty, six fifty-five D, VIN number A four-two-four-nine-five-six. Passed through and adopted this twenty-second day of January, twenty twenty.
Okay. Counsel, we've heard the resolution. I would like to ask for a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion to approve.
All right. Motion, Mr. Day, may I have a second? Second, Mr. Gordy. Counsel, any comments or discussion? All right. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Proceeding on on the Utilities Department, we have a resolution in reference to authorizing the mayor and city manager to accept a proposal from Thompson Insurance Incorporated for property and liability insurance for calendar year twenty twenty in an amount of two-hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, maintains property and liability insurance on its utilities, buildings, equipment, and infrastructure. And whereas the City of Phoenix City has obtained proposals for said property and liability insurance. And whereas Thompson Insurance Company, Thompson Insurance Incorporated has provided a proposal with an annual premium for said property and liability insurance in the amount of two-hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby accept the proposal with Thompson Insurance Incorporated for said property and liability insurance with an annual premium of two-hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars for the year twenty twenty. Passed through and adopted this twenty-second day of January, twenty twenty.
Okay. Thank you so much, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, we have all heard the reading of the resolution. I'd like to ask for a motion for approval, please.
Motion to approve.
All right. Motion, Mr. Day, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Gordy. Comments or discussion?
Mayor, could we have, uh, Mr. Steve Bellte, what's his name? HR person I hear is.
Uh, this is just a annual renewal of our insurance. This is, uh, property insurance, liability insurance, and vehicle insurance for the utilities. As the council knows, we self-insure in the general fund for liability and vehicle insurance. We can't do that in utilities because we issue revenue bond to be based on the actual performance of the utility system. And so under our bond covenants, we have to buy a liability and vehicle insurance. And, uh, and what this is, is just a renewal of that annual policy, uh, this company, it's, uh, Thompson Insurance is the agency, but it's actually through the Alabama Municipal Insurance Corporation, and they specialize in this type of insurance. Very few insurance companies will insure governmental entities, particularly utilities because of the risk involved.
Thank you, sir. I just want to have a citizen to get an idea of what is going on here. This is a big, uh, high dollar.
It is, it is expensive, but it's, it's also required. And as we saw from the claims we got just about two weeks ago.
All right. Thanks, sir. Mrs. Smith? Any other? If not, at this time, counsel, let the call for the vote. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Proceeding on, counsel, on the license application. This is a second reading. We have an application for a bond, bonding company license submitted by Maurice Ward, Ward's Dale Bond Company located at two thirty-one Hugley Road, Valley, Alabama. Uh, this is a second reading. I will not ask the clerk to read it due to the first reading was on the seventh of this month. So with that said, counsel, I would like to ask for a motion for the approval of this, uh, second reading.
Motion to approve.
All right. Motion, Mr. Gordy, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Johnson. Okay. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Excuse me. Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Also proceeding on the license application, this is also a second reading. It's an application for an off-premise beer license, an off-premise wine whiskey, whiskey and wine license, retail package store, submitted by Shazana M. Merchant, a merchant and associate LLC doing business as Alabama Spirits and Wine located at thirty-seven sixty-four C, Opelika Road, Phoenix City, Alabama. Again, I will not ask the clerk to reread it. The first reading was on the seventh of this month. So with that stated, counsel, at this time, I would like to ask for a motion to approve the second reading.
Motion to approve.
All right. Motion by Mr. Gordy, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Bailey. Okay. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to call on Jim and Graham, our city attorney. Mr. Graham?
Mayor, we have six claims on the agenda today. Uh, the first one being the, the claim that was, uh, one of the claims that was tabled last meeting, uh, filed by Jessica Murphy where she had some sewage back up in her house. This claim was turned over to the insurance company. They have accepted liability. Uh, they are now working with Ms. Murphy to, to get her house fixed. The, uh, our insurance policy though has a five thousand dollar deduction. At some point in time in the process, the insurance company will bill the city for the five thousand dollar deduction. Uh, I recommend that we go ahead and do that today, uh, where it won't slow the process up to get you a house restored.
Okay. Uh, counsel, but before I ask, uh, for a motion for his recommendation, I do want everyone to know that there were some, uh, media coverage on this that was not true. In fact, it was totally not true. Uh, we have handled this in the right manner. I know there's some other things that were said on the news that is totally not true. Again, I do want to reiterate that everything was done with the communication from our attorney. Uh, is exactly how this process worked, and since that time, our attorney has communicated with that person also. Am I right, Mr. Graham?
Yeah, yes, that's correct.
So I just wanted to clarify that because we do not conduct business that way. Uh, uh, this council do not. So with that said, counsel, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the recommendation of our attorney.
Motion to accept the recommendation.
All right. Since she said it longer, we give her the motion and give you the second. We got that, Melanie? You all, you all raising.
All right, that's fine.
She had a long sentence in you.
That's fine.
So we have the motion and the second at this time.
He's kind of sensitive over there.
Like to call for the vote.
Had a rough night.
Well, it ain't her fault.
That's right.
I'm aware of that. I can, I don't need to elaborate on this.
Let's go ahead and take the vote.
I'm aware of that, sir.
All right. May I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
We got the motion and the second. All right. Mrs. Lee?
Okay. Um, Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, no.
Confusing our city clerk. You can't mess with the city clerk, man.
I'm not messing with anybody. Just doing my job.
Mayor and counsel, the next claim was filed by Brittany Paylor. She was the, uh, renter in the house that we just talked about. Uh, the insurance company is also working with her. On her claim, uh, again, there's a five thousand dollar, uh, deductible on, on each and every claim. So my recommendation is to approve that five thousand to speed up the process of making her home.
Counsel, we've heard the recommendation from our attorney. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion for approval, please.
Motion to approve.
Motion, Mr. Gordy, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Bailey. Okay. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor, the next claim is filed by Curtis Bishop. Uh, Mr. Bishop, uh, is, I believe, the pastor or one of the trustees of Shallow Baptist Church. Uh, it's regarding property damage. We had a, a sewer that was stocked up, and then the heavy rains, it ran over. Um, and, uh, sewage got up under the church. Uh, church was located at fourteen-ten, uh...
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth Avenue. I'm sorry. And, uh, they were directed to, uh, submit three different estimates. They only, uh, submitted one. So I'm asking you to table this where I can contact Mr. Bishop and get him to get two more estimates in, and I just ask you to table it till the next week.
Okay. Counsel, we've heard the recommendation. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to table.
Motion to table.
All right. Motion, Mr. Gordy, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Johnson. Okay. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
The next one, Mayor and counsel, was filed by Janice Bowman. Uh, what happened with Ms. Bowman, she was traveling on Sanford Road. We had done a cut down there, utilities cut. Uh, we did what we're supposed to do and, and put gravel into it, the cut, until we could pave it. During a period of time, the asphalt plant was closed, so we could not get asphalt to, you know, uh, fill in the cut. Somewhere or another, the weather and the rain caused the gravel to come up above the level of the street. And she was running down there, and you know how low these cars sit now, and it damaged the undercarriage to her car. Uh, she and, uh, and, and this is different than a pothole when I get up here and tell you, we gotta have notice. We had notices that this was there. We just couldn't repair it.
Quickly.
Yeah. And, uh, she submitted three claims, uh, or three estimates, I'm sorry. Uh, the lowest being a thousand five sixteen fifty-three. I recommend that we, uh, approve this claim in this amount.
Okay. Counsel, we've heard the recommendation from our attorney. At this time, we'd like to offer a motion to approve his recommendation. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right. Motion, Mr. Gordy, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Bailey. Okay. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. The next claim was filed by Shakia Frazier. Uh, Ms. Frazier, again, she was on Sanford Road at Twelfth Avenue. She hit the same, uh, cut that the previous claimant hit. Her car was, uh, the front bumper and bumper cover and wheel alignment. Uh, she submitted three claims. The, uh, lowest being, I'm sorry, estimates. The lowest being a thousand three forty-five forty-two. I recommend that we pay this claim in this amount.
Okay, counsel. We heard the recommendation from our attorney. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve his recommendation.
Motion, motion to approve.
All right. Motion, Mr. Gordy, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Johnson. Okay. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
I'd like, I'd like to say yes, too. Uh, that was a true, uh, what the folks were saying. I'm glad we got that to solve because I hit it twice in my truck, but there's no damage occurred.
Yeah, you, it was your, your trucks hired and you don't see it.
Yes, there was no damage to it.
Yeah. All right. The next claim is filed by Jennifer Gordy. Uh, she lives at one sixty-four Glenwood Way.
Where's that at?
It's, it's right up the street from me. Um, it says Fifth Alabama, but I were, we were in Phoenix City. It's just that, you know how the federal government, but anyway.
Better get Griff in trouble in this mess than on the castle.
Yeah, but the, uh...
I've explained that a few times.
But what happened was, uh, it was a ride on police motorcycle that, uh, her son was riding and his son was riding, and he parked it around in front of the house. Now, the garbage pickup for Mr. Ms. Gordy's house is on the side of the house. So it shouldn't have been, you know, we, we've had things where people would leave them next to the garbage cans, and of course they'd think they had, you know, wanted them picked up. They had to pick them up. This wasn't the case, and the guys just made a mistake, picked it up and crushed it. And, uh...
Crushed there.
Crushed that little boy's heart, too.
Yeah, and, uh, they submitted three estimates, uh, the low, lowest being two hundred and eighty dollars and ninety-nine cent. I recommend we pay this claim in that amount.
Okay. Counsel, we've heard the recommendation from our attorney. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion for the approval of this recommendation. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion, Mr. Bailey, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Johnson. Okay. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Same.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
The last one, thankfully, is submitted by James Hathaway. And Mr. Hathaway was driving on Lakewood Drive. We had a, a large pothole that we could not, we had put gravel in and then we were aware of it, but we couldn't, this happened at the same time period that the asphalt plant was closed down for Christmas. We couldn't get it. Again, the weather caused, you know, problems with it. Mr. Hathaway hit it and did damage to his tire. He submitted three claims. The lowest being one twenty-four ninety-one from Kia, and that included taxes. And I recommend we pay this claim in this amount.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Grant.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, we've heard the recommendation from our attorney. I asked that, I called for a motion for the approval of his recommendation.
Motion to approve.
Motion, Mr. Gordy. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Bailey. Okay, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Have a thank you.
All right. I listened to those three claims and what the cost was. I would ask that they have to wait possibly until the roof was at asphalt put out there. Is that feasible to do in it? Is the case of this issue to reoccur?
It, it don't work when the asphalt, it depends on, we have cold that we put out there, it depends on the weather. When it was getting like above, they put the rocks out there, but as that go, that rock can be out there and floats up and depends on the weather. That's what happened. That's not every day. It was close, but we have cold also. You put it on hot and you put it on cold. It's a difference. The cold is soft when it comes through and when it's raining already, you can't get the compaction that you need to put in there. So that caused, that caused a problem. But we have been doing that several times.
I understand.
We don't like this. We don't want this to occur, but that's what happened to do it well with it. So now you're better than people who are joking and stuff like that. But it's a mean man, right?
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Okay. Set it matter. Anything you want to add? Take away. Anything?
They told me, tell y'all who's just joking around. So nobody will think you're a mean man.
Counsel, anyone? Not?
Yes, sir. I have something to say. I said this to our mayor individually, and I said on TV, he's a, he's doing a real good job of leading his council. He's doing a real good job of serving the city. He's doing a real good job in the community. As we sat at the table down at the event the other day, as we all know that he put the reception of the Monica King winner award and he well deserved that. And he shows his affection for the city of Phoenix City. And I like to congratulate him again on TV. I did that the other day at Francher individually. But I like to say to him, just keep up the good work.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Very humbling, but as I stated, you know, I was always taught that when you do something for a person, do it sincerely and don't even look for a thank you. So that's what this council brings. And that's why we always push back when things are not true. Again, because each of us up here is really giving it our all for the right reason. And because of them, they had a lot to do with it also, me receiving that award. So I do want to thank everyone, but it was very, very humbling for me.
Let's give our mayor a hand.
Anything else?
It can just mention that Central High School, I think, did outstanding hiring of a new coach in such a short period of time. Looks like we're going to continue our championship ways and wish the Red Devils and Coach Nix best of luck in the coming seasons and look forward to see us get back to the championship game again. I don't think we lost a step doing this. So I'm really tickled to see it move forward and kudos to the school board and to Superintendent Randy Wilkson for jumping on that so quickly and getting something done.
Also, I'd like to add, Mayor, remind the elected official that the elected official lunch will be next Thursday, the thirty of January from eleven thirty to one. And we're looking forward to all those elected officials in this area as well. And I'm sure everybody come by and at least try to get a free lunch if nothing left. This is something that has been going on this, I think, fifth year doing this. It's all about improving the relationship between the state, county and city government. We are going to have some of our state officials here as well. And what we did this year, we are going ahead and invited Mayor Bubba Copeland out of Smith Station and Mayor Hershborough and also my good friend, Matt Hager out of Tuskegee and Skip Henderson as well across the river there. And also, I talked to the general for, been had an opportunity to visit with him on the receptionist. And he also was sending a representative here being Washington D.C., but we're looking forward for that. And I say that and risk to be redundant here, there will be no issue discussed at all. Only thing, there'll be a lot to stand, give their name, what compassion they serve in state, local and city government, how long they've been in that position. That would be all being said at that time. But after the luncheon, they are able to say anything or talk to any person they would like to say. And we hope that it lasts about an hour and a half.
Mayor, before you adjourn, let me just spotlight a festival. This is the first annual festival of arts, which will be held at the Central High School cafeteria and auditorium from two to four thirty. This is on February one. So if you don't have anything, I would love to come and support our school. These are our children. Makes it, you know, their business to make sure that they can produce all the necessary requirements for graduation. But this is the first annual festival of arts and it includes the band and choir, the visual arts, drama, theater and culinary art. So it's going to be an epic event. So we look forward to all of our citizens coming to support our children.
Thank you all. With that said, we'd like to thank CTVB for bringing this to our public. And again, thank everyone and let's continue to be an example, the right example.